On our country with the pledge legions.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every king and justice.
First item on the agenda is DJ Zickler, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me. I have a, I hope to be a pretty minor matter. This does not involve the allocation of any new monies. It's a request for us actually budget money that currently exists. At the time we prepared our budget last year, they went unallocated or allocated to the wrong place. What we're asking is to establish a budget for prosecutors 1234, which is our forfeiture fund. What that means is anytime that we receive monies from, that we see from drug careers, drug traffickers, that the courts have said we can have, we put that in an account and we use that to fund the further operations of our drug task force. For whatever reason, during the last segment, second, didn't ask to spend any of that money. And what we have found is that in order to continue funding our operations of the drug task force, we need to allocate or set a budget for those funds so that we may return tax for permission to do that in the future. What we've found during COVID is that there has been an uptick in degree drug activity. Our drug task force has been active and has been intacted. And frankly, we need money to do the good work they've been doing for a number of years. So again, this isn't asking for additional funds. This is just a reallocation within our existing budget so that we can expend funds for the purposes of the DTF. And again, these would not be taxpayer funds. These are funds seized from local drug arrests and what has become a river of misconduct on the western. So I don't think any impact to your constituents with the county taxpayer.
So those funds that do come in now, they go into your supplies line item?
No, what my understanding from from the county is that we are reallocating that. Originally, we had put $10,000 in the operating supplies and had not. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's just the operating supplies is just the tag that we use in this budget cycle. So in other words, that's, there's no other money in there. That's just the classification that we chose. It could be anything.
So that forfeiture money comes to you, DJ. Where's it going to now?
Sure. It goes, it goes into this account, but we did not establish a budget for this account. So it was just, the money existed in 2020. And then as we were looking into 2021, I didn't say, yeah, I'm gonna spend $10,000. Some of that is as a result of the way that we funded drug task force, federal grants have fallen off that used to allow us to fund bulk of their operations. And so when we were looking at last year, it was and has been fairly murky. In fact, the sheriff's department, the city, sure busting itself with the thing I am right now in the process of trying to understand the future of the funding for that entire operation because I do think it has to be, it has to be addressed. And this largely a result of that change in funding. So I don't get any questions.
Thank you. Any other questions of DJ?
Make a motion, we approve the request.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown to us passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dale Booth, please.
Good morning. On the agenda, you'll see that it's a request for so today we're just have the request for counsel for MicroPulse. Obviously, with the county's largest, the highest wages, pretty substantial payroll. MicroPulse is in the process of looking at another significant investment. We're using additional hiring and two hundred fifty five million dollars is what we saw in the memorandum. That the five million dollars does help them stay competitive in a very favorable market that they find themselves in. And they have made a request for a ten-year tax evasion on property investment. And I've got several members that are MicroPulse executive team here today, and they'd like to just kind of give you an update on the company and talk a little bit about the investment. Any questions you might have?
Brian Moore, chief management officer of MicroPulse. So MicroPulse continues to have strong growth and we're in a working price market. We understand that. As we look at these types of projects and continue to get push from our customers for multi-site. And we have other business ventures. Not only is it MicroPulse, we have two other business ventures, R and B, we also have a business called the NAB who has offices in Carmel and in Lafayette. So if expansion comes up, we always have to consider it's with the county, the right place. It's a great business. County council has been very good to support our rural areas in the county and northeast regions, great place to business. It also has this other impact of our customers who want disaster recovery, customers who are in California, East Coast, Indiana, Northeast Indiana, tornado court, or handle our whole building, supply chain. We understand that this may not be worth the site. We also have major customers who are in those decisions as well. So when we apply for abatement, it's time for work or to help support the growth. It is important. It is part of the decision process that we go through. It's good, but we can't guarantee that it's great forever as we have other locations and other sites and risk management work to happen in. We would like to keep it close because we get a lot of benefit out of one location, one building, one culture, one system. We don't have people spread out. MicroPulse continues to do well. If you look at all the companies together, Indiana are full of any payrolls, unfortunately, about 150, but all of those in one town. So again, appreciate council's support, past projects. I'm sure this will be the last one. So can I answer any questions?
I've asked you this question before. As you get into the hiring process, are you veteran friendly in your hiring process?
We are veteran friendly. We have a few. We've always had probably that age that's been a guard and we always come and they leave. We've done several things with the guard out of the airport. They're extremely employer friendly and really help work with employers to educate, help understand all those out there. But yeah, we've always had some on staff and they usually make the hires. They're just one of the ones.
Thank you. Thank you. Dale, I'm getting feedback from our online listeners that they're having a hard time listening. So anybody that comes forward to speak, if you would, just stand at the end of the desk. You don't necessarily have to sit down, but make sure you introduce yourself and speak towards Councilman Barrett's microphone, please.
So again, with that, we have prepared a resolution and a request for the personal property tax abatement. That is the request in front of you right now.
And that would be 2021-03? Yep. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Booth?
I make a motion that we pass resolution number 2021-03.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, let it be shown to us passed unanimously. Scott Wagner and Dan Weigold, please.
Morning. Dan and I are here to request that we spend our existing funds from both of our departments for new GPS equipment. We use GPS equipment to collect data in the field and have been doing that since 2002. Most of the receivers that we have in the past, once I collect the information, I have to come into the office, upload it, correct it, save it, export it. Whereas this new equipment will be real-time data collection sent to the cloud. Help us gather data quickly and put it onto the GIS server. If you've been to Beacon recently, you can now see septic systems and wells on properties of GIS Beacon. So that's a new development that we paid for, we shared it. And with this continued collection, we'll further that. Any questions? Again, we have our own funds. We just, we want to come by and make sure that you're okay with that, seeing how much we're on $10,000.
Where do those funds come from, Scott?
So we have a, this year's budget for the health department, we're using money that was not spent on the purchase of the drug vehicle for that. And then Dan has a GIS equipment fund in place as well.
Can I bring it up?
What we're talking about, once you see the figures and well, okay, now we're first on the beacon. What will happen is the number of calls that come in for this type of information will be greatly reduced because people can look at it themselves now. You can see the absolute miles that he walks, like he walks down there with.
Now, this is just one subdivision on 09.
Yeah. Actually, it's quite amazing. The data that's with that is quite amazing. And this here will cut down his time and we have to post-process the data. And it's just, this is going to be a huge benefit for him because it's going to be updated the next day. On our beach side, it's got a way to, you know, just a little more time for him to have to post-process it and do other stuff, make it available. So this is, we're one of very few counties that have it. So it's pretty neat, pretty neat sound.
Technology benefits or technology upgrades are always beneficial. For the sake of the audience, could you explain how people in the county benefit from this?
So we've been collecting septic and well data since 1957. It's all on paper form. If somebody were to call in and want to know their septic record, we would have to have some type of filing system to find it. We took 10 years to upload, actually scan and physically every single permit in the health department into computer system. So now we have a PDF of all of that. And then the system that we use with Nathan helps us find that by address or name. What this does, we collect that on the field with that. This is the inspection. So when people want to add on a deck, or they want to put up a pole barn, or they want to improve the property, or they maybe have a wet spot under the yard, they don't know if that's part of their septic or not. We can go out there physically look at, but we actually actually go out there physically locate it with the GPS equipment too and tell them if it is or isn't. At least they can go online, look at this. They'll also help real estate agents see where the septic wells are as well without having to call our office and taking our time to do that. I would say most of my phone calls are from real estate agents for crazers or homeowners to keep their septic system. So obviously, what you see on there is only 2002 or newer. My hopes is at some point, I'm able to employ somebody or have the time to go back and collect past data beyond 2002.
And I received two different proposals.
Right. The one we should have, should be around $9,054.18. And there's a parentheses of 10,000 there. If you look at that, there should be five items. You have the one with five items. You have the five item one. The RTX, what that means is that it's something we can add on to that if we can't get cellular data. There are some locations in the county where cell phones don't really work well, usually in the South Willy area. If we find that we're having a lot of trouble collecting data with this, then we can add this on for a year. And that's RTX, and that's using satellite as well. And it helps. I don't anticipate using it that often, so I'm not including it in the quote, but probably the $9,054.18 is what was accurate.
A single unit.
It's just a one unit.
Rather than that, also for two units.
Right. See that, that there's not many users that would use it. Obviously, we can share that equipment. It's not solely the health department's finding means. So if somebody else wants to do that to collect data, we can collect anything with it. Stop signs, culverts, towers, anything you want, an inventory that, information for future use. You have a subplot accuracy.
Do we have a resolution or?
It's not. It's just, it would just be an approval for them to move with the project and to use those funds for that.
I make a motion, we approve the project and funds used as discussed.
A second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously. Scott, if you would, please, you still have the floor. Moving on to your next item.
I think this is just a request to use grant money to continue to pay Jackie. When we brought her on full time, she was going to pay out of a grant and now her pay will be paid out of grants. She has new payrolls that will be split, just like we do with Carly. So it's just to use the grant money that's there.
Is that a one-time grant?
No, it's continue every year.
Continue every year.
Yep. So like next year, if you look at, you get next year's budget from us, I think $20,000 out of the certain some thousand that her salary is.
This is just the official paperwork for the part-time to full-time person.
That we already approved. So what we have here is a salary ordinance amendment and an additional appropriation request resolution. So if, if you choose, we can incorporate both those into one motion if, or we can handle them separately, whatever council chooses.
Make a motion, we approve the amendment to the salary ordinance and the additional appropriation resolution ordinance.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously.
Update on COVID or service.
Yep.
So starting here in May, yesterday, we were down to two days a week giving vaccinations. It's Monday and Tuesdays through May. We won't be here a little more all day, obviously. Then in June, it's just one day. And it is slowing down quite a bit. Three weeks ago, we were over 300 a day. Now we're down, we're not even making 200 barely a day now. So it's slowing down quite a bit. As of last Friday, with the county has 32.5% of eligible adults have received both vaccinations. So that's pretty good, 32%. By the end of this week, we'll have given over 14,000 vaccinations for Whitley County's health department, which is quite a big feat for our little county here. We continue to see changes in vaccination. Johnson Johnson is approved again. However, the hospital is choosing not to do their clinic all because kind of has a red mark on it now and they're anticipating a lot of participation in that. Pfizer is to get their probably their approval for 12-year-olds and older vaccinations. However, Whitley County doesn't have Pfizer. Only in the Miro Center and the Coliseum have Pfizer in Northeast Indiana. So people wanting to get shots for their children will have to go there. Other than that, we're, like I said, we're getting, we're slowing down. Hopefully hours will be guys often. Any questions for me? We were having about, we've had a couple days of 20, 16 to 20 positives, but most time it's less than 10. Our positives are because of school-aged children. They just, when their families came back for spring break and it went up, and it's starting to slow back down again. So we'll go back into yellow next week or the week after. But we won't truly get to blue until school's out and we'll stop testing.
Are you getting a lot of no-shows on your shots?
The first, last couple of weeks, we did. It's not as bad now. Most, I'd say 80% of people, you know, schedule our second shots. Majority of them do show up. We'll have a handful that doesn't. And I'd say, like I said, 80%, our second shot, 20% will be first shot. In June, almost all of them will be just second shots as it slows down. I know that you can get vaccines, vaccinations pretty much anywhere. All your pharmacies, your doctor's offices will start getting them in June. So we have, we have plenty to last this, the summer and the fall. So we will be reordering any vaccine right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Amy Biggs, please.
Good morning, council. Amy Biggs, Whitley County Emergency Management. Come before you today to request a reappropriation of funds that have already been reimbursed for intentions that were made through another entity. So Whitley County Emergency Management as well as Whitley County Health Department participate in the district-wide healthcare coalition. And part of that mission is to advance the preparedness at level of our healthcare system as a whole. Many members that comprise that are hospitals, health departments, nursing home facilities, long-term care facilities, dialysis, and many others. If it has health in the name, they're part of that coalition. They include emergency management from our background of preparedness. One of the initiatives that we are working on is a stop the bleed campaign. You may have heard this if you've been in emergency services. Due to any type of trauma situation, it's been the trend over the years that the first initial person on scene can potentially save a life with very little equipment. And training on that is critical to be able to do that immediately. Most of the time, people think of stop the bleed as relates unfortunately to large mass shootings. But in our community, specific to agriculture and manufacturing, this could occur at any one of those facilities. So the initiative of the district was to better prepare communities for response in that area. In order to do so, we purchased kits and I provided an example of what that kit would contain, it's a training prop. And we were purchasing all of those. We had to upfront the money to be able to purchase that, but it was fully reimbursed 100%. So in fact, the auditor had received the reimbursement check before we even received the bill. This is just truly a request to return county general funds that were already reimbursed back into the EMA budget. The amount being requested is the full amount that was part of the initial invoice, so $1,477.98. Welcome. Any questions that you may have?
Who's all in the healthcare coalition?
It's the 11 counties in Northeast Indiana. So pretty much from La Grange to Wells, if you can imagine that, and over to Miami, to the full Northeast counties, 11 counties. And each county received one of these kits to be held at their local health department and then partnered out to other entities to be able to do the training.
I'll make a motion that we transfer the money, reimburse the money. However, you need to do that.
Motion in a second. I would like to say, I appreciate the fact that you keep up on these opportunities. And this is something that could have not been recognized or not been obtained for us in the, in our, in our county. So appreciate the work that you're doing with that. Any further discussion or comments? We'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Jan Schenbeckler, please.
Thanks. So I believe everybody got a quote for the timekeeping system and then you also got a breakdown of the cost savings that would be to go from the right stuff to advanced time instead of cost and yearly costs on there. So I, you know, went to the commissioners yesterday, explained to them that, that we've had issues with the right stuff and this advanced time is much more user-friendly. It's obviously going to be a cost savings to the county. We had a demo. It was, it was great. It'll throw up red flags if any, you know, for the department heads, if something's missing and someone's timesheet. It's just, and it, and it also communicates with our other systems, unlike the right stuff does now. So George, I think the.
We gave a favorable pass through the commissioners to Jan on this.
And then the transition as well. So I did send a copy of the right stuff's contract to Matt so he could review it just to see when we would have to break that contract because we have already made the payment. So I don't know if we can get through the end of the year. So I don't know if we can try to get some money refunded. But I'm working on that with that just to see what our options are. So hopefully, maybe by beginning of next year, end of this year, we can start to maybe transition if you guys do approve the funding for it. But I will keep you posted on, you know, if we can get a refund for that and when we can end that other contract.
How long is that contract? Why?
Well, when I read it yesterday, it was actually a term of three years. So that, that really, it was up the end of last year. So, but I don't know how.
Is it, you don't know if it auto renews or it just ends?
I think it auto renews. I just, I didn't get that far because it was at the end of the day after. So he's going to review that for me now and let me know.
So where, the money come out of county general for this?
It comes out of my budget. Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, it comes out of PUCAP. It does come out of PUCAP.
I would feel comfortable with an overlap of services, but I don't think that it should be any more than 60 days. So I would think between now and November 1st, the determination needs to be made on whether we can get a refund from them. And if we can get a refund, we could move forward. But if we're not going to get a refund, I would suggest that we wait until the, till that time to start the 60-day overlap and go with the new system starting the first of the year would be my thoughts on it. I wouldn't want to approve this and then not be able to recover any of the money that we've already prepaid them.
One question in regard to that. How many months lead time do you have to have to have it implemented for January 1?
I think it would probably be about, I think, November. You know, like you were saying, just, just enough time to get everybody transitioned over, get everyone trained.
Well, the monthly savings alone shows this benefit. Plus the ease, it's easier to use than your current program. I'm for it.
I think in the department head meeting, I remember I attended, one of the themes that I caught on, not only on this, some other things that departments are doing is consistency. How many employees, Dana, do we have? Yeah. So if everyone's doing it the same, it makes it a lot easier. And I think with the department heads being able to follow it easier, this will track comp time and everything, correct? I think it's probably a good move with as many employees as we have.
And at that same meeting, you talk about integration. I can't see a reason not to do it. Just the timing is key.
So I think it would probably be appropriate for us to table it until we find out when you can get a refund or if you can get a refund and maybe bring that to us at the next meeting and then we can make a decision or give you a decision on allocating the money and spending it or spending the money on it. Do you think that's something that can be accomplished in 30 days?
It's reasonable.
Sheriff Gatten, please.
Well, first off, thank you for seeing me. I've been coming over here for almost 14 and a half years. So ball was dropped, it was dropped. Today, I'm coming back in front of you in reference to the three scenarios that we had talked about in March. And today brought with me Stan Brown from Strebe and King. He is the, what I would consider the expert for the Indiana sheriff's. He is the, what I would consider the expert for the Indiana Sheriff's Departments, which I believe, Stan, you guys have 90, 91 of the.
91, the actuarial, the consulting work. So what that means is we calculate the county's spending requirement for retirement plans each year. When someone retires or terminates, we prepare their benefit application paper.
So I brought Stan to answer any questions. I know there was some concern about the plan being able to sustain if it was lowered. So I'll switch seats, Stan, and look for the microphone.
The sheriff and the mayor board had us do an actuarial study last fall that looked at adding a special early retirement age to this plan. Right, right now, normal retirement age is 55 and you're either 10 years of service, depending on who you are, than when you were hired. The special early retirement age allows someone to, a deputy to retire earlier if they choose, if they meet the age and service requirements, that would be part of that definition. The two scenarios that the sheriffs had us look at last fall. The first one was a special early retirement age of age 52 to 25 or more years of service. And the second one was age 50 to 20 or more years of service. Under both scenarios, you could choose as a deputy to retire and your benefit is not reduced for commencing prior to age 55. And so the 50 and 20 scenario is more costly because potentially more people qualify for that because the service requirement is only 20 as opposed to 25. Some of the reasons to do this, or why the sheriff and the mayor board considered doing, doing this is police agencies in the state are all battling for the same group of individuals to come work for them. And that would be local county, police, state police, city. They all have their own pension systems. The state police has a special early retirement age. It's 25 and out. There's no minimum age requirement on it. So if you're a state trooper and you're hired at 23, you can retire at 48 if you want with a 25-year benefit.
But ex-trouper sitting next to you, so.
Okay. All right. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
The 77th police and fire doesn't have a special early retirement age, but they have an earlier normal retirement age than, than what the Whitley County Police Plan is, which is 55 to the 77 fund, you can retire at 52 with 20 years of service. Most county police plans in the state have an age 55 with some, you know, years of service requirement, just depends on what, what they've individually chosen to do. The special early retirement age is something that, there have been a lot of interest in the last few years. Some counties already had it. And up here in northeast Indiana, that was referenced here earlier in the meeting on something else, but your neighbor to your west put it, put a special early retirement in a year and a half ago. And three counties along the Ohio border here in northeast Indiana are either considering it or in the process of doing it. Something similar to what the sheriff has to look at. So it does have a cost to it, obviously, because you're providing the opportunity for someone to retire earlier. They've been a bit smaller because they don't have as many years of service or higher salaries that they would draw if they had chosen to stay, in all likelihood, the higher salaries. But the trade, that's a trade-off. They trade off the service and the, the extra salary for the chance to retire and draw benefit earlier than, and it's unreduced for early commencement. The, the current plan provides for a 5% reduction if you want to retire prior to age 55, as long as you have at least 20 years of service. So if you, under the current plan, if you wanted to retire at 54, whatever your benefit is at that age, you can wait and draw it. You can, if you terminated at 54, you can wait and draw it at 55. Or if you wanted to start it immediately, you take a 5% hit that's permanent. The special early retirement wipes that out, basically. When we did the study last, the two scenarios last year, we determined that every, the deputies who were not at normal retirement age, all but two would benefit under at least one of these scenarios. And that's just demographic driven, it's based on when you were hired and, you know, when you get to age 50 or 52, how many years of service you're going to have. And so, you know, that, that's the extent of reasoning behind, behind this. There's some probably other county savings outside of the pension that, you know, would come into play if you have officers retire earlier, they get replaced with younger deputies. Maybe that works its way into health insurance premiums eventually by turning over your apartment a little bit quicker. So that's the, what we've looked at here. Want to add anything to that, Sheriff?
No, just that I lean towards, and the mayor board leaned towards the 50 and 20 because it benefited more people in that department. The one I talked to you about, the 52 and 25, there's less people that can benefit. And Stan, I think you have the numbers of between now and 2026, and there's only three people I think that would be eligible for.
Let's see here. Under the, under the 50 and 20, you basically, there's, there's one, there's one person over the next 10 years, starting from January 1 of 2020. So that's the 10-year period. The plan currently has six deputies or the sheriff being at an age where they would retire. In the next 10 years, you've got six under the current plan that would get to age 55 and retire. The 50 and 20 scenario brings just one more person into that group of being able to retire earlier. And so over time, you know, the rest of the department, other than two, would be able to take advantage of that. The payouts, the benefits, the retirement plan is currently paying. They would, they would go up under the 50 and 20, they'd go up. You know, basically, if, if you put one of these, if you put the 50 and 20 into place, there is, there's one officer this year that could do it. That, that you're, you know, pretty much immediately, they could take advantage of it. And another one next year, and then two more in 2023. But, you know, this plan, as we do our work every year, we're taking into account that, that deputies are going to get to retirement age. The study just shows, okay, you know, what if we moved that retirement age up for some of the people? You know, what's the plan? A year ago, the, this retirement plan was 80% funded. And, you know, as a, as an example, PERF is. So, you know, you're, you're in a position where if you put this in, you don't all of a sudden go to 65% funded. In fact, the funded status, under the 50 and 20, the funded status would have fallen to about 75 and a half percent a year ago. So, you know, down four and a half percent just on the funded status. Under the 52 and 25, it would have just fallen 2% from 88. So, you know, from a long-term perspective, you put this in, you're not going to start draining the plan, the trust assets out of this plan. Okay? You would see higher contributions. I don't know, Sheriff, you shared the study results at the March meeting.
But one of the reasons was the study to show that the fund could sustain it.
Right. You know, we show, when we do our calculations, we provide the county with three options on how much money to put in. There's a minimum, a statutory minimum, that the state is very much interested in whether or not county police plans at least fund that much. Whitley County typically puts in at least the recommended, which is the middle of the three contributions. And the current plan provided for the 2021 number to be about 29% of pay. Under the 50 and the 20 scenario, which is the one that's more expensive, that jumped to 32 and a half percent of pay. So about three and a half percent of pay increase, and that's every year. That, you know, contribution would be higher by three and a half percent of pay when compared to, you know, the current plan. The 52 and 25 was cheaper. It's about 30.2% of pay, so 1.2% of pay increase. You know, there's 52 and 25 is very, is a popular scenario that we've been asked to look at on quite a few counties. I mentioned Causey Osco, had a very thing a couple of years ago. Here, if you want to talk about the contribution.
Yeah, we spoke about the employee contribution if we went to the 50 and 20, but, you know, currently, the, all the deputies put 3% in and they'd be willing to go up to a 4% contribution, which would offset. But I figured at roughly around $10,000 to $11,000 off that 41.
Right. So, you know, roughly 1%. So I mentioned the, the 50 and 20 was 32 and a half percent of pay as compared to the current plan, which was about 29%. So it takes that 32 and a half percent of pay down to 31 and a half percent of pay from, from the county side. And, you know, we, when we did the study last fall, those numbers weren't, the employee contribution going to four was not reflected in there. So sheriff has it right, the impact is about 11, $11,500. The deputies would be contributing more, and so that's less the county has to put in.
So what is the total number, the difference between what the county puts in now versus what it would be putting in if we went to the 50-20, which seems to be the preference of the mayor board?
The recommendation, we do our work a year ahead of time. So when we did the actuarial work last spring, that 1-1-2020, that was for the 2021 year. And so the recommended was 331,981. As an apples-to-apples type comparison, the 50 and 20 would have been 373, 023, grand 73,000, 023, so about $40, $41,000 higher. And then if you factor in the deputy's contribution going to four, that knocks 11,000 or so off that increase. So down to $30,000 more. To put a 50 and 20, it would, it would cost you $30,000 more approximately. 52 and 25, I think Sheriff discussed with me that because not as many deputies would benefit from that particular scenario because the 25 years is harder to get before you get to age 55. We're looking at leaving it, staying at three, so that number was, you know, 346 or so. So, you know, there's an extra 14,000 or so from the county and 11,000 from the deputies if you went to 50 and 20 instead.
So what's the 52-25 number then? You said a difference of 30 or 27,000 about?
52 and 25 was 346, 093. So it's about 14, it was about $14,000 higher than the current plan.
Once the compensation's figured for a deputy's retirement, there is no COLO for the years following this retirement.
That's right, there is no COLO in this plan, no cost of living increases in this plan for retirees.
And I actually looked into that with Stan, and those numbers are asking, we tried to get a COLO.
So Stan, do you have the number of what the county is currently budgeting for the plan versus what the new total amount?
I don't think, I don't have, I'm guessing you budgeted 331,981. I mean, that was the recommended that we had done last spring for 2021. We haven't, we have not done this year's report, which would determine the 2022 number because we're sort of waiting to see where this goes to avoid having to revise a report.
Yeah, we mentioned in 350,075.
350,075. So you actually did, the, the higher number, as I mentioned, we show three, the higher number is the accelerated county contribution. And the only difference between the three is accelerated has the shortest amortization period of the plan's unfunded. So it's like having a 15-year mortgage versus a 25. You pay more, but you also pay less interest over, over time because you're paying it off faster. So that, yeah, that's the accelerated. So that's, you know, that's good that you budgeted that, but that was 30.5% of pay. And so the accelerated number under the 50 and 20 would have been about 397,000 before any adjustments for moving to the 4% on the employee contribution. And so, you know, and that's an important thing to, to, you know, consider here is, you've got a range of contributions that you can look at. And the state monitors, they get it off the gateway every year, the auditor reports. You've got to make them, otherwise you get on their, their list that they share with the General Assembly. You guys haven't been on that. And so, you know, you budgeted the accelerated, I mean, you've got something, you've got a number lower than the accelerated if you wanted to, you know, choose that at some point. And you're still meeting the minimum, you're exceeding the minimum with that contribution. And that's why we do this, is to give options with, with a, you know, an emphasis that at least make the minimum. So, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, what, what we've been asked to look at, and those are the numbers. I think the sheriff shared the study with you. It was done in October last year. It was us pretending, you know, that you put this in place for the 2021 year, at the start of the year. Even if you, even if you adopt one of these scenarios this year, we don't, we're not going back and revising the appropriation request or, you know, for this year. It's going to take effect in 2022 from a plan perspective.
And I just wanted everybody to remember, just because if this would go affect, it doesn't mean everybody's retiring when they hit it because we have that three-year drop option where a pension stops and then they start setting money back and you get that is a lump sum, but you're not gaining your 2% every year that you stay.
Right. The other thing with special early retirement age is it also becomes a deputy's drop age if they choose. A drop is, is for any retirement, for a retirement option program, you freeze your benefit. If you go into drop, your benefit is set at that point in time as if you had retired.
And it will be the remainder of your.
That's right. And so you don't, if you stay on, don't retire. Stay on the job, you're not getting any more credit for service or for salary increases. So if you did, you know, someone was in drop and the county did a 15% pay adjustment, well, that's great, your paycheck's bigger, but it's not helping your pension because you had gone into drop. And, and the sheriff mentioned, you give up the additional years in this pool on the drop side. The special early retirement age in a plan also helps some of the younger deputies who maybe don't qualify for drop under the current plan because they get 32 years of service first and before you get to age 55. If you're, if you fall into that category, if you were hired at age 23 or younger and stay, you can't ever do the drop program under the current plan. The special early takes care of that because that becomes everybody's drop age if they satisfy that first. So it gives options. Nobody has to take drop. Nobody's going to have to do any, you know, the special early, but understand, it just, it gives options. And, you know, we've, we've seen, you know, a surprising amount of, of interest across the state in, in adding something like. something like this. I mentioned the state police has a 25 now. They don't have a minimum age requirement in theirs. So, you know, if you're hired at 22 with the state police, you can be done at 47. Here, you're controlling the cost a little bit, but you've got a minimum age requirement under both of these scenarios. So, you know, somebody could get to, is likely going to get to 20 years of service before they get to age 50, you know, if you're hired before age 30. But because you've got the age 50 minimum requirement, at most, someone is going to be able to draw five years of benefits under that scenario. And under the 52 and 25, only three years. So that helps control the cost of a special early.
So, bottom line, and someone correct me if my math is wrong, we're talking about an additional $37,000 out of the county budget for 2022 over what we put in in 2021.
I think it'd be lower because we put the...
I've got it, if you went with the 50-20, I've got it at 30,000. And if you went with a 52-25, I'm around 14,000.
Right, because the 50-30, or the 50 and 20, excuse me, would bring in the 11,000 plus on the employee side. And so that, you know, reduces the county's requirement dollar for dollar with the employees picking it up more.
Wiltley County currently has two deputies that this is, I guess you'd call it, this is their second career. They were, they worked in another department. And neither one of them will be, ever be eligible for you on it. They will hold by it.
Yes, the merit board, have any recommendations in reference to this?
Their first recommendation was the 50 and 20. We didn't talk, at that time, we didn't have what we talked about last time, the sunset and the no sunset on it. And then, of course, their second was if that wasn't a choice was the 50 and 20. Their first recommendation was the 50 and 20.
And then we have, we prepared an amendment, I don't know if you...
Sure, I did show them the elements of the 50 and 20.
Okay. 15, yeah, the 50 and 20, you know, you add the definition to the plan. The employee contributions were bumped up to 4%. For administrative purposes, we felt like that would go at 1-1, 2022, just for variety reasons for payroll. But, and then we prepared an amendment that, the same thing, but that sunset both of those things at 1231 of 2026, I think, yeah. So what that means is, the special early retirement would be in place from, you know, the first of the month following the adoption of a plan amendment. And if you satisfied the requirements for that during the timeframe all the way through 1231 to 26, you could take advantage of it. After that, it would have to be, you know, extended by the county council and the merit board.
So there would have to be another amendment?
There would have to be another amendment. Same thing with employee contributions, those were going to four, those with sunset also back to three, absent, you know, being extended.
Yeah, but then a continued age.
Yeah.
Just like you guys, every time we do a study or it comes out of our pension plan is how we pay for the studies or the amendments.
So, and the sunset provision isn't unique to the special early. There's a county that has been, you know, running a special early retirement age of 53, basically, on four-year periods. So the sheriff, the sheriff at the time, you know, takes care of it. And if he serves, you know, if he gets into a second term, he, you know, has the same analysis done in their plan that we did here on what the impact would be. And, you know, they get it extended for another four years and that becomes, you know, the next sheriff and county council have to go along with it.
But even without the sunset, the council can say to the sheriff, this needs to be readdressed with a new amendment?
Yeah, except the merit board and the sheriff would have to go along with it.
Right.
Yeah. And it takes all three, so they can't, the sheriff and the merit board can't get a change done without you, and you can't get one done without them. Yeah.
But I can't speak for the future, but I can't see any sheriff coming in if it came the time where they recommended, we've got to stop this, we've got to go back to another big fund this properly. Can't see any sheriff or any of the council wanting to not change it, I have to, we can't fight them.
Did you bring this to the commissioners yesterday for any discussion? So commissioners don't have a recommendation?
I did not, just because of the statute. It's a quality, the final step that you got.
Stan, if someone loses, someone goes on pension and they pass away, does that go to their spouse?
There, yeah, there's two debt benefits. There's pre-retirement debt benefits. So if someone passes away and had a vested benefit, yes, the spouse is covered. When it starts depends on how old the, how old the deputy was when he passed away, but everybody's, you know, spouse would get a benefit. We say it benefits everybody, but really protects the deputies who are closest to retirement age or already beyond it as well. On the, once you've retired, when you do retire, we provide paperwork, we give the options to pick from. If you're married, you have six benefit options you can pick from. Three of them cover the spouse, where spouse will get a percentage of what you were drawing based off of, you know, when you passed away, if the spouse was still living. And then there's three other, so, yeah, there's debt benefits for spouses.
Which Jim, I think you understand, for every option we have, if somebody chooses to leave it to their spouse, you have like 100%, you can leave in 66, and everyone you take higher, of course, is reducing, right?
Right, the base benefit, yeah, the base benefit out of those plans of life and immunity. The rest of the five options that, the five additional options are based off of either a period certain that's guaranteed or your age and your spouse's age. And so those amounts are smaller than the base amount. And, you know, once somebody's made their, the choice, that is set. You know, and if you live to 100 and your spouse lives to 105, the plan's going to keep paying. If you pass away after a year, if your spouse passed away a year later, you know, benefit's
These figures take in downturns like the recession of 2008, '09?
We assume the assets in the trust do six and three quarters. We look at this, this is a long-term entity. And so as of a year ago, the plan was about 80% funded on a measurement that governmental plans get measured at. My anticipation is when we do this year's report, the current plan, you know, without any change, would show, would show that number's higher. Because the assets did pretty well last year is my anticipation, not as well as prior year, but from what I've seen on the county police plans thus far, I would anticipate it's better funded. But, you know, it's a defined benefit plan, so everybody's benefit, you know, the retirees' benefits are already known. The deputies, we project a benefit, so their benefits are set. If there's a downturn, yeah, eventually, you know, it takes more funding. We don't recognize, when there's a downturn, just as when there's really two really good years, we don't recognize it all at once. We spread out gains and losses on the assets over a five-year period, so 20% of the time. And so that helps with the volatility as much as possible. But, yeah, I mean, that, there's always that risk. I was, pulled up the demographics of the plan for the actives. There were 19 actives as of the start of last year. The average age was 40, and the average service was 9.6. So, and the study results really show this, that now's not a bad time to be doing this or considering it because you've got a younger group in there, so it gives you time to pay for it.
And that's also changed, not dramatically, but a little bit because Scott Geitz left at 27, he was, he'll be 55 this month, so we hired 23, Jason, 22.
He's really young, so, I mean, that's going to bring us down. After reading and listening to all that's been presented on it, especially I'm in favor of the second option, 50 and 20 year, with the deputies' additional contribution going to 4%.
Stan, how long, how long has Cosi Osko been on this?
They amended their plan in the summer of 2019, so a little less than two years.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we table this matter and request an executive session because it does deal with payroll and personnel issues so that we can have further discussion after we've digested today's material.
Yes, and I think it's very appropriate that we table it, and we will table it till next month, both with concern of having some more conversation and the fact that the sheriff recognizes that there was a little bit of a problem officially being on the agenda, but we added it because with the understanding that this is going to be a really good information gathering process. But I'm not sure if the executive session would be, we can talk about that, but I'm not sure if the executive session would be proper for discussion on this as much as it would be fact gathering from all of us individually and then being prepared to maybe some final questions and make a decision on it at next month's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, is that, if we would have executive session, can the commissioners be invited in that?
Well, we can't make any decisions in executive session, it would just be information gathering. And I think that would, with this particular subject, I would be very cautious about us blurring that line, and I would probably be, be more of against having an executive session for this purpose than having an executive session. I can be convinced otherwise, but that's how I feel.
I think we need to look at the whole benefit package. This is one section of it. But I think we need to look at, look at the total benefit package. I mean, I, I got a copy of the handbook when I, when I took office, and I, and I've read that, and, and I, I was surprised on some of the benefits that we offer. So I think we need to look at the whole package and not just one segment of it.
Well, and I think we need to consider timing also. I mean, we're still in COVID, we're trying to get out of that. I think we need to consider the timing of this matter. That's what I'm thinking right at the moment. So I think we need to give it some consideration.
Mark, what's the timeframe on being able to get this accomplished for the start of the next budget cycle?
That's just a rough, we'll have to use the recommended to put in, so if this would pass, then we would need to have their budget.
So if we would allow maybe a little bit of extra time in your budget meeting with all of us to review what Councilman Auger-Bride is speaking of, that would put us back another month, though, as far as you coming back to council, because I think our meeting is scheduled for the 12th of June, is that right? 16th of June? So that would essentially be pushing it back another month. Is that something that you think we can work with if it's, if it's presented to us on the, in the budget cycle and something that we could look at as far as for next, starting the first year?
We haven't done anything for you because of...
If we wait till then, I can bring full sets of numbers to the budget.
So we'll add...
Stan, if we were to make our decision in the July meeting, you still have significant time for implementation, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's right, because we've got the plan amendments, you know, all set, really, they're, they're labeled with the effective date of the special early would be first of the month following adoption and then the employee contribution would be 1-1, 2022. So we're set with that. It's just we haven't done the actuarial report for 1-1, 2021 yet. And, I mean, we could, we have to run, we have to run the current plan anyways because we have to do for the government accounting report, we have to have both plans. So we can, we could do something in the next month, I mean, we could run something this month, is that plenty of time for you?
So as it sets now then, our June 16th, if you've not been informed, I think everybody has this, we'll have our budget hearings for the county.
What time is that?
They'll start at eight in the morning and last the entire, probably until three or four o'clock in the afternoon. And let's schedule, we usually schedule sheriff's department for a half an hour. Be here early because their budgets usually don't take very long. And if I remember from years past, we generally have a little bit of extra time with yours too. So let's try to incorporate in that. If we push a little bit late, then we'll push a little bit late. But she had, she does have the schedule out already. So you're at 8:30. 8:30 to 9:15, so 45 minutes, and we can probably, we can probably get 15 minutes from the first two also.
And I will try to send over, I can send over and show you. We project for that 6.75 or six and three quarters, and I should show you, I forget how many years back and how we feed it, but there are some years we've been under 6.75.
Just from my own retirement savings, that's a fairly conservative estimate over the course of someone's 20 years.
So we will push this for a decision until the July meeting, if you'll make sure it gets put on the budget, or the budget, the agenda for that time. Thank you, Sheriff, thank you for coming and answering and being available.
Thank you.
Next item is commissioner report, please.
I think before you, you have the emergency closing policy that we had about the last, the last meeting you had, we presented that. If you'll look on the back page of that with compensation benefits upon closing of the department or the building, that's where we change things. We went to, we have three choices that we could have on that. We picked the second choice on that where if the county department or building is officially closed, hourly or non-exempt employees will not be paid for hours not worked unless otherwise approved by the Board of Commissioners. Hourly non-exempt employees may utilize UPTO. Salaried or exempt employees will receive their predetermined amount of pay without deduction of any paid time off. Additional pay or time off will not be granted. But we do have as a final paragraph on this, any unique or unusual circumstance may be presented to and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners. Only the Board of Commissioners may authorize exceptions to the above policy. So that's the major changes in this. So we would ask that you approve the policy as presented?
I'll make a motion that reprove the policy.
Motion a second, floor is open for further discussion.
George, I do have a question because there are some departments that have to work. It's where the exemptions, exceptions come in.
Right.
For your approval.
Right. If there would be any exceptions at all, it would have to go through the commissioners. The reason we've done this, we've, we've done this before where we've closed the building and then some people would go home and work and some people would, would come in to work. And it was just, we were paying double payout and it was just more, it just made sense to come up with a policy. And if there had to be any exceptions, then it would come through the Board of Commissioners to do that.
And is that exception granted in arrears in the case of the sheriff's department, the highway department? Because they're going to have to work.
Yeah, it would have to be.
All right. And is there any expectation or any way that, that people in those two emergency departments essentially would decline to work on their scheduled time because the county buildings are closed?
Well, when, when those people are hired, they understand that they are, that's part of their job.
Part of their contract. Okay, just wanted to confirm that they couldn't just say, people are taking the day off, so I'm...
Time's so on. Time's on.
I like George Hall spells out the PTO time. That's good.
Yeah, we thought, actually Jennifer worked. And she did a great job on it.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, and it was passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next thing I have, I've just got some good news. Brandon informed us that the community crossings grants came out. And Woodley County was granted in the first round, $621,298. So we'll be able to do a lot of paving that we, we didn't know if we were going to be able to do or not. That's great news for us. And then the only other thing I have is that commissioners right now, one of the major concerns that we have is going forward with the jail, whether we do a new jail or what, what we do. So what we'd like to do is, I, I think we need to have a couple of councilmen to work with us. At this point, we've gotten to the, the serious point where we're going forward. But it just makes sense to have a couple of councilmen to work with us on that. So if you would, if we could get some kind of consensus on a couple of councilmen to work with us, we'd really appreciate that.
I would entertain that. I'd like to serve on that.
I would too.
And I'm also going to put myself on that being the chair.
And I have been involved in the past too, so I'm interested. So, but that's forced to me.
I am going to leave myself on it since I'm in the chair's position, but I will leave it up to council for the other three people who would like to be on it as far as I'm designating to additional.
You have volunteers, take them.
We have too many volunteers.
I'll back off.
You sure?
Yep.
I feel like my involvement prior to this point in time, I have some backgrounds. That's, I'm willing to go either way. Jim, John, Jim.
You can fill in.
I agree with the three to my right.
There's your three volunteers.
That works.
We appreciate that.
We don't need a vote, do we?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
And I think that's about all I've got.
Can they update, upgrade Mercury Wireless?
Mercury Wireless, we did find out that they upgraded the Verizon Tower now. I was notified, I think Saturday, that they have that tower up and running now. But, um, other than that, we haven't heard too much. I haven't heard anything good or bad in the last couple of weeks here. But we do know that, that that tower has been activated. So that'll help 500, 600 area with a couple of subdivisions in there. But, um, that's about where we are right now. Teresa is working. We, we met with Warsaw Fiber yesterday. MetroNet is, is in consideration for us. We're looking at, working with a, a multiple sources right now. Leak Tell, it looks like it's coming from the north now, and, and they've got a good reputation. So we're, we're trying to come up with actual ground, not the, not the wireless, but actual ground cable. So, it's, it's going to take time. And we're trying to determine, you know, what best resources do we use for that? You know, because if we use taxpayer money, is it proper to use taxpayer money for that? We're hoping to get grants. There are some grants out there that we're working on.
Approval for minutes from the April 6th meeting, please.
I pointed out a couple of corrections that needed to be made on the original minutes. I think they have been. Somebody can personally approve of what the corrections that were suggested.
I'll second.
Motion a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please respond by raising your right hand. And the five people that were here voted to approve them with Vice Chair Wheeler and myself upstate. Councilman Barrett.
I'm got the.
Councilwoman Lechner.
No.
Councilman Auger-Bride.
I appreciate adding the sheriff to the agenda today. I thought it was very good fact finding.
Councilman Warren. Don't be. Councilman Comfort.
Personnel committee did meet yesterday. And we are recommending sending a weekly building and planning, building and permitting technician role to WIS for refactoring. Job description has changed based on what's happening in their office. And also in that same department, there is a part-time administrative assistant who was already budgeted for that he's requesting to hire. And we had some question, the part-time position, does that need to be factored or considered?
That would have to fall within the salary range that we have established.
It's in the salary range, it's fine. Okay. All right. So the next month, we'll be recommending that be passed. And if we get the the refactoring returned to us, we'll be bringing that as well. So we'd like to be put on the agenda at this point.
Okay. You guys made an appointment for the Peabody Library last month, right? Yep. Because I didn't see that on the new sheets. We probably need to update that. Vice Chair Wheeler, you have anything, please? And I have nothing to mean as adjourned.